Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. Can we begin with a motion to waive the rules of council?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rules have been waived now. Can we please, would a clerk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Now please rise for the pleasure allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence.
My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda has been amended and will now move on to proclamations. I have two. If we can begin with the brothers from Alpha Phi Alpha, please come forward. Thank you both for being here. We've done this proclamation in the past, but it's just an honor to be able to recognize these gentlemen and the work that they do. I know Councilman Coghill has served with Mr. Curry on the SEAs board, longtime public work, uh, public employee and also a longtime mentor for me, um, even back to when I was in high school. So it's really a pleasure for being here. Whereas Alpha Omicron Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity will be hosting its fourth annual Black and Gold Community Awards Gala on September 28th, where members of the Pittsburgh community who exemplify the values of the fraternity will be recognized and honored. Whereas since its founding on December 4th, 1906, as the first intercollegiate Greek letter fraternity established for African-American men, Alpha Phi Alpha has supplied voice and vision to the struggle of people of color around the world. Whereas this year's celebration marks 96 years of service to the Pittsburgh community with honorees recognized in four award categories that include mainly deeds, scholarship, love for all mankind, and the Annie Singleton Award. Whereas the honorees for the Manly Deeds Award, which honors those men who commit their abilities to serve all of mankind, include Pennsylvania Lieutenant Governor Austin Davis, Ernest and Young Pittsburgh Office Managing Partner Daryl Smalley. And whereas the honorees for the Scholarship Award, which honors visionaries who positively impact the lives of student scholars, includes Pittsburgh Public Superintendent Wayne Walters, CMU Temper School Executive Director of Community and Inclusion, Colleen McCullen, and President of the Pittsburgh Black Nurses in Action and UPMC Nursing Facility, Leontine Daffin. And whereas the honorees of the Love for All Mankind Award, which honors those who provide for the needs of underrepresented, includes CEO and Chair of the Pittsburgh Black Chamber of Commerce Doris Carson-Williams, Mount Eric Community Activity Center Executive Director Denise Head, and Ramon Hart, Director of Community Relations at the Rivers Casino. Whereas the honorees for the Annie C. Singleton Award, which honors those who promote, encourage, and embody the spirit of fraternity and sorority ideals, include First Lady of the City of Pittsburgh and Promoter of Black Arts Michelle Gani, President of Pittsburgh Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Helen Bauer, and President of the Pittsburgh Pan-Hellenic Council Andrea James. And now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and congratulate the honorees of the Alpha Phi Alpha Black and Gold Community Awards Gala. May there be a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It has been approved.
It's a pleasure to be here with you. I want to thank Councilman Lavelle for initiating this resolution and for all of the council members for, for co-sponsoring that, including my councilman, Corey Mosley, and my long-term friend, Anthony. We are proud. I'm a member of the Planning Committee for this event and a former president of our chapter. With me is Davey Huddleston, also a former president and event chair for this event. We are very proud of our fraternity and the service they provided, both on a national level when our members include people like my personal heroes, Supreme Court Justice.
Thurgood Marshall.
Thurgood Marshall and Martin Luther King Jr. And on a local lever, level, our members have included former councilmen Jim Jordan and Jake Mullins. Uh, we're excited about this event. In addition to the honorees that are listed here, we also gonna record, we're also gonna recognize our oldest living member, and that's Brother William A.G. Fisher, longtime principal of Taylor Aldice, who has just turned 100 years old. Uh, we're very excited for this opportunity and thank you very much for being here, inviting us here.
Congratulations. Did we walk through that picture?
What's that?
Did we walk through that picture?
Pass the burns. Thank you. Just wanted to take a moment to recognize another longstanding institution within our city. And whereas the Northside Church of God located at 1822 Chateau Street holds the distinction of being the oldest church of God in the state affiliated with the denomination's headquarters in Cleveland, Tennessee. And whereas its roof traced back to the early 20th century when Bishop Garfield Byrd, along with wife Everlina Byrd and key members Sister James, Sister Banks, and Sister Herms began the church's ministry through home prayer gatherings in the South Side of Pittsburgh. And whereas following Bishop Byrd's leadership of the church until 1938, subsequent pastors include Elder Bishop Judge Hamilton, Bishop T.W. Wimberly, Bishop W.L. Jones, and Dr. N.S. Marcel. And whereas, under the leadership of Reverend Charles Dennison, the congregation purchased its current location at 1822 Chateau Street where Bishop Dennison served until his death in 1965. And whereas the church's longest-serving pastor was Bishop Fairlie Ridout, who alongside Sister Gloria Ridout led the congregation for 34 years from 1973 until 2007. And whereas in 2009, Reverend Yvonne Burns was appointed as interim pastor and later voted in as permanent senior pastor, becoming the first woman to serve in this capacity, spearheading 15 years of pastoral leadership as the church continues to experience both spiritual and financial growth. Whereas Pastor Burns announced her retirement as senior pastor on March 3rd of 2024, paving the way for Minister William Jones to serve as interim pastor and Reverend Yvonne Burns as pastor emeritus. And whereas the Northside Church of God celebrates their centennial anniversary as they continue to build the legacy of its founder and subsequent leaders with a commitment to the mission of empowering its members as servant leaders for the Kingdom of God. And now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare September 24th, 2024 to be Northside Church of God Day in the City of Pittsburgh. May there be a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Has been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Unfortunately, I'm here as solo, but certainly these last 100 years certainly is, is a result of standing on wings of eagles for years of great leadership on the North Side. And I just thank God for you coming and I thank God for allowing this proclamation to be approved. Thank you very much.
And I believe we have two to be read into the record, one from Councilwoman Strasburger and one from Councilman Coghill.
Councilperson Strasburger presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, September 27th, 2024 to be Mazer Galleries Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Coghill presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, September 28th, 2024 to be Core Bishop Michael J. Kale Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May there be a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both proclamations have been approved. Our next order business will be public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which may be forced by the council, profanity will not be permitted. After you recall, please reset your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Miller.
Dr. Ronald Miller, Bell Sover and also St. Petersburg, Russia, Global Info Intelligence Network at gmail dot com. Uh, I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2024. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the American Astronomical Society, the Geological Society of America, uh, and the American Historical Association. Uh, time is central to the information and intelligences of the disciplines of astronomical studies, geological studies, and human historical studies. And in this PC, time means a construct derived from the motion of the earth on its axis, um, as it circles the sun. How long to make an axial revolution, defined by an accumulation or enumeration of the down-up motion of a foot, uh, or the rest pump motions of the heart. There's a great deal of dispute about time now, especially in physics and astrophysics. A concern of council is museums. 17 September 2024, there was a proclamation for the John Heinz History Center and Museum, JHHCM, Gideon Kayan Gargajia, that's African Haiza Museum. Uh, this council room, in my view, is a museum. Council room is historically 1910s in its construction. The council room, um, is a nonsensical brown template which dulls the brain neuron links necessary for intelligence upgrade. Council room is a non-spectrum, non-rainbow, dragging down the interloble cross corpus colossal information exchange, uh, inconsistent with LGBTQ commitments of this council. Um, and the council room is information poor. There are no kiosks or screens. I have been here many times when younger people from students from all across the city have been in here and I have never heard one of them say, oh, what an awesome room. Uh, when can I come back? Um, Ha Ku Bu Tsukan, Asian Nihongo for museum. The JHHCM USA, that's the best, um, in the United States. Example, none were given um, by Mr. Wilson and his JHHCM accompaniments. Um, I'm gonna offer one, um, which is Dentaku Calculator, which is one of the most important inventions, um, in history. 1642, Pascal invented the mathematical calculator in 1947, skipping a couple of hundred years. A physicist, US-American, uh, Doctors William Shockley, John Bardine, and William Brett Hayne, um, all created an electronic calculator which led to the microbuses.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Iyaz Azuni.
Hello everyone, my name is Iyaz Azuni. Uh, I live in Brooklyn. Uh, in the aftermath of the Pajer terrorist attack that Israel conducted in Lebanon last week, it is clear to me that Israel will use civilian infrastructure to perform military act. I know Israel considers me and thousands of Pittsburghers who support the boycott campaign and go to ceasefire rallies as enemy. It is only a matter of time until they target us here with the city's infrastructure. They may get our information and leak it. They may hack into the city's systems using software or hardware bad doors and remove records of my paying taxes. They may use some methods to add a tag to my name or car to get me stopped on the road or airport more often. What I'm here to add is I want the city of Pittsburgh to take solid steps to protect me and my family from potential nation-states terror attacks. I want the city of Pittsburgh to boycott anything coming from Israel. This is long due. It's been asked many times from people of the city of Pittsburgh, um, and the council has improved on it. Uh, please take action before, uh, my safety and the safety of thousands of Pittsburghers is in jeopardy because Israel has demonstrated it is willing to use its civilian infrastructure to attack people. Also, Mr. Conto, you represent me. I tried, I tried reaching out to you multiple times. Caitlin's email is full. It does not receive anything. And Blake's email doesn't respond. I don't know how to reach you. You recently cleaned out parts of Pioneer and said to reach out to you for any city need. However, I've been trying to reach you and I'm not getting any response back and I, obviously, I don't know how else to reach you. Um, so, uh, please put on your website or your Facebook page or whatever, uh, way, uh, possible, uh, your, the contact, the preferred contact info so that we can express our concerns in the city. I've been trying to reach you for over a month now and having gotten no response. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ralph Williams.
Uh, thank you, President Lavelle and members of council. Good, uh, good morning to you. Well, I, I think you pretty much have an idea as to why I'm here yet again. I'm here because I'm trying to save and re, and bring back Pittsburgh community television. Now, I don't know if I'm wasting my time with you here or is something actually gonna be done? Alright? I've been coming, I've been talking here for weeks about this. Now, Mr. Lavelle, you went ahead and had a proclamation for a church about two blocks from PCTV. I have no issues with church. I go to church myself, so I have no issue with church at all. Alright? But what I have an issue with is there's a TV station on Western Avenue that is in your area and I haven't heard from you at all about what you're gonna do about it, about why I can't put my TV programs on there. Alan comes down to your council chambers and he can't put his TV programs on and many other producers can't do it either because PCTV is shut down and I've heard nothing from this council or the mayor's office. Okay? You have money for the NFL draft, you can find money for, for PCTV. Help PCTV. Let's get it back up and running. We want it back. It needs to be back for the community. It's been around for 38 years and then all of a sudden because of incompetency of the director, it ended up getting shut down, in case you, in case you're not aware, because we're worried about plastic bags and other stuff that's of nonsense. This TV station needs to come back. And yes, that's right, I'm throwing jabs at everybody here at this council because it's unacceptable that, that no one has done anything, that, and no one has called me, no one has emailed me or reached out to me and said, hey Ralph, maybe I can help you with PCTV. Nothing. And I think that's sad. And you know what? For people who vote for you, you should be voted out if you're not gonna help out with this. This is an important thing, an important tool for the city, an important tool for the county. I'll be back next Tuesday again to speak because I hope I don't have to and I, and somebody in this council reaches out and does something. Yes, I'm talking about you, Mr. Lavelle, because it's in your area. Have a great day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ikahana Hal Malkina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Chief Ikahana Hal Malkina. As leaders, we cannot afford to turn a blind eye to the inequities that exist in society. Our children deserve to live in a peaceful world filled with violence and harmony, with love and kindness. Their innocence has been taken away by social media platforms filled with access to drugs, thugs, porn, violence, and a host of other undesirable behaviors. It's no longer the parents in the home that influence our children, their malleable minds. Give our babies a chance to envision themselves as engineers, pilots, computer programmers, astronauts, scientists, anthropologists, and more. While the environment is of great importance to indigenous people and some of those of this council, we must move aggressively to truly mitigate violence that threatens our existence on this earth. While this council has moved legislation to rid the city and soon the county of the use of single-use plastic bags, I would like to see more meaningful approaches to the economic struggles families are facing. Basic necessity and needs are hard to come by these days. Housing is a human right. Food is a human right. Water is essential. Our children deserve to go to safe schools. We have work to do. So I plead with you to roll up your sleeves, band with us, and make this region a living, breathing example of how society heals itself with love and equitable use of resources. Do away with classism and decolonize this space. This region was once an affordable place to live. I have been taking on testimony of people who used to pay $400 for rent, $600 for rent, and the most, maybe 800. The rent that is being, people are facing is unimaginable, is leaving them further in poverty. This is an economic war that is being waged against the people and it needs to stop. It must stop. Warring against the people is inhumane and childish. It's controlling, it's oppressive, it's abusive, it's cruel, it's disgusting. Mother Earth is disgusted with you, so she slugs, so she shakes, and her fires. We must do something and I urge you to do something. I give thanks to my ancestors whose shoulders I stand upon. Thank you for hearing my word. May it move you to action. In my keala keen, Chief Ikahana, peace, love, and mercy to you all.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Also provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. I spoke last, after speaking of the kerfuffle of no escaping the Beachview Library, um, when the elevator broke, um, the city ADA person who sang the songs of "I'm sorry", then saying, "But it's not our problem." Um, no, you called me, you didn't know. I looked in this real estate portal and I told her, "Look on the real estate portal" and, oh, yes, it is the cities. And then she sang the song of, "Oh, well, we're gonna have to have meetings and get budget planning and blah, blah, blah", so on and so forth. Not acceptable. Then I get calls from library, "Bernadette, we're so sorry. We are code. We're compliant. We're code." Malarkey. Then if allowing disabled people, including children and veterans, have zero easy accessible emergency escape, I swear, I say green donkey snots. City ADA person says, "Well, we have to have the budget meetings." Bull. A library personnel called. I told her what to look for of why I was stuck back there and it's a $35 threshold for an ADA ramp, right there. Rakes to smooth out what once was, I'm sure you remember that used to be a driveway that went down there, and two-by-two Home Depot or Lowe's cement garden pavers. Whoa-whoa. That's all you need. You don't need to have this big, huge, pay money, have a meeting, do whatever. Change the code also. Who are the code makers? If the codes are so dangerous, and they are, if a person is stuck in a building because there isn't a $35 ramp, what's that say? Change the codes. Let Pittsburgh be the leader as to what ADA code accessible really is. And it starts here. Then we go to the county and then we go higher up. I remember when people strapped themselves to the buses downtown and that's how we got ADA accessible laws. Trust me, I would, in a heartbeat, in a protest, change the codes, please. If that was anybody here, if any of you were in a chair and you were put in a situation where you could not leave a building at your, at, at that moment, what would you do? If that was your mother, if that was your child, change the codes. I don't know who has to do the magic writings. Do it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Special Agent Sunshine. I'm homeless but not helpless. I'm gonna start by returning the sender any voodoo hex's curse is sent towards me. 100 million, billion, trillion googaflex in Jesus's name. Whoever's sending it, throw him in Lake of Fire, Lord. I know you see him and know who's doing it. Dear God, thank you for caring for me and being there to carry my burdens. Please help me walk in the freedom you provide and allow, allow others to help me. Proverbs 11:29, which involves healing and understanding, says, "He that troubleeth his own house shall inherit the wind, and the fool shall be servant to the wise of heart." 1 Timothy 6:10 says, "The love of money is a root of all kinds of evils. It is through this craving that some have wandered away from the faith and pierced themselves with many pains." I'm already wealthy in Christ, which is why I'm not looking for those who have stolen everything that has my real name on it. As you can see, I'm still being protected and blessed by God from those still trying to kill me so they, so that I never receive what it is. When the truth comes out of who I really am and what happened to me, all those involved will be held accountable for whatever part they played in this heinous betrayal. John 1:5 says, "The light shines in the darkness, and the darkness has not overcome it." Lastly, I just want to speak on the discrimination of the construction workers, uh, in regards to the medical marijuana thing that's, uh, they're being discriminated against or losing their jobs because they're not able to receive it for chronic illness. Steelworkers not based in Pittsburgh. Why? Could it be they don't want to be subjected to breathing the chemicals that they put in the air? But we're forced to breathe it. In regards to overdose and the opioid's problem, who's bringing it in our country? Who's paying for it? Nobody's stopping it at the borders, but somebody is making a lot of money from them coming and the device of others. Insurance fraud is real and big business, but will be removed from the earth along with everybody who partakes in it. Don't believe it, just watch. Y'all don't believe it, but you're gonna see what's gonna happen because God's not playing with none of y'all in regards to this. Lastly, Father, thank you that you are my light and my salvation. You are my defender. You are my strong- You are my defender, you are my stronghold of my life, so I need not fear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charland, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
There you go.
Councilperson Charland presents Bill Number 941, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Municipal Investigations to enter into an agreement or agreements with VersaStern, formerly known as CI Technologies, to extend the current agreement and amend the name of the vendor in an amount not to exceed $7,282.80 over one year for OMI's electronic case management system, IA Pro, and Bill 942, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Rita Porterfield in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,000 as a settlement for EEOC case over one year.
And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 943, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of $100,000 to Support Forensic Genetic Testing by the Bureau of Police.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation Performance Asset Management Technology. Councilman Mosley for Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 945, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 629 of 2023, Further Amending Resolution Number 484 of 2022, Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2021, Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, the Director of City Planning, and the Director of Innovation and Performance to Enter into an amended professional service agreement or agreements with Building Eye Inc. to Purchase Software and Related Support Services that will create an interactive map for internal and public visual display of planning, permit, license, and violation data by increasing the approved amount, by increasing the approved amount by $40,596 for an amended total cost not to exceed $627,936 over eight and a half years.
And Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Cale Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth and Senior Services. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cale Smith presents Bill Number 949, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an agreement or agreements with Allegheny County Department of Human Services for the city's operation of its senior community centers. Said agreement or agreement shall be a term of one year at no cost to the city with compensation to the city not to exceed $773,100.
Thank you. Now, Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 946, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Comer Miller LLC for Legal Services in Connection with Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $10,138 over one year. Bill 947, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Summers McDonald, Hudok, Guthrie, and Rouch PC for Expert Legal Services in Connection with the Litigation Matter in the U.S. District Court for Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $15,200 over one year. And Bill Number 948, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman Thomas &amp; Battle PLLC for Expert Legal Services in Connection with the Litigation Matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $12,432 over one year.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 950, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the U.S. Department of Energy's Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds in the Amount of $337,960 for the Installation of Solar Panels at the City's Fourth Division. Bill 951, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh, the Director of Public Works and Director of Finance, to Enter into an Isment Agreement or Agreements with Duquesne Light Company to Provide, Install, Use, Own, Operate, Maintain, Repair, Renew, and Finally Remove Two Light Poles and One Anchor Along With Thirty Feet of Vegetation Clearing Rights Located Upon City-Owned Property in the Parking Lot of the Pittsburgh Zoo at No Cost to the City. Bill 952, Resolution Granting Unto Enchion Ventures LLC, Their Successors and Assign, Their Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense at No Cost to the City, New Permanent Shoring and Footers Above Grade Unit Balconies and Building Facade Elements That Will Extend Into the Right-of-Way at 3239 Street in the Sixth Ward, First Council District of the City of Pittsburgh. And Bill 953, Resolution Granting Unto the Standard BCLLC, Their Successors and Assign, The Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense at No Cost to the City, New Permanent Building Footers and Building Canopy That Will Extend Into the Right-of-Way at 2120 Fifth Avenue in the Fourth Ward, First Council District of the City of Pittsburgh.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill 959, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title IX, Zoning Code, Article VI, Development Standards, Chapter 919, Signs, Section 919.03, Non-Advertising Signs, to Regulate the Use of Non-Advertising Signs for Major Public Destination Facilities in the RIVNS District.
And I have one communication.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 954, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended September 20th, 2024.
We need a motion to read, receive, and file?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Our next order of business is reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting on the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 936, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for September 18th, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 705, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title VI, Conduct Article V, Discrimination, Chapter 651, Findings and Policy in Chapter 659, Unlawful Practices to Make Medical Marijuana Patients a Protected Class and Restrict Discrimination Against Them. Bill 867, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Binkley Canavi Group LLC for Printing Services for the Popular Annual Financial Report for an Amount Not to Exceed $5,275 over one year. Bill 909, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable to the Allegheny County Department of Court Records for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $500,000 in Payment of the City of Pittsburgh Petition to Interplead and Discharge of All Liability and Costs in the Litigation File in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bills have received a legally required number of votes or passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 937, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for September 18th, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 706, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 173 of the Pittsburgh City Code, The Naming of Room 458 in the City-County Building to the Tim McNulty Press Room. Bill 868, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works of the City of Pittsburgh to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund to Rehabilitate the Brighton Heights Healthy Active Living Center. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides Foreign Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $500,000 for this Stated Purpose. Bill 869, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the Historic Former Carnegie Library of Hazelwood Phase 1 Roof Stabilization Repairs Project. The Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $300,000 with a Local Match of $150,000 for a Total Project Cost of $450,000 for this Stated Purpose. Bill 870, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the Sixth Street to Market Square Connector Project in the Amount Not to Exceed $244,556 for this Stated Purpose. Bill 871, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the Upper McCardle Roadway Bridge Repairs Project in an Amount Not to Exceed $250,000 for this Stated Purpose. And Bill 935, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the blockstone porches of Valonia, Moreno, and Uvella Streets located in Elliott be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh City Code.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting on the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 938, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for September 18th, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 749, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Aubrey for Services Relating to Non-Congressed Shelter Services related to the Home ARP Program for a Total Not to Exceed $1,500,000. Bill Number 872, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning and/or the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Manchester Citizens Corporation for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds in the Amount of $13,852 to Support the City's Planning Effort to Study State Route 65 and Ways to Connect the Chateau and Manchester Neighborhoods.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Council President, I would like to recommit Bill 749 so that it appears tomorrow in standing committee.
There's been a motion to recommit Bill 749. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Wilson?
Any discussion? You want to explain what's going on here?
Sure. I'm happy to explain it further tomorrow, but essentially, we have done due diligence on understanding exactly what they're planning to build here in Allentown. Yesterday, Councilman Wilson accompanied me. We met on site with Chief Frank and Director Dalton. At that point, they informed us that the plan was different from what we had been discussing for the last couple months, and we want to make sure that that's codified in the legislation with what they're planning on building. They were, every conversation had been about building singles, you know, having shelter for single individuals, but ultimately, it looks like their intention is to build it for families, which changes some of the community impact, and we want to make sure that that's codified in the legislation.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to thank Councilman Charland for, you know, going through the walkthrough yesterday, trying to understand, you know, how the city and the county could be supportive. I believe that there's been some, I don't know, some misunderstandings, and I just had a chance to read through the application, the original application, and that Aubrey submitted to get the funds, and so I think that's just where, I think we all just need to understand what this process, what's happening in this process, because I'm not seeing in the application where it specified a use. So, happy to walk through that, but, you know, I'd like to get this done, you know, in some fashion, not even saying it has to be in your district, but I think we all can see what's happening outside and the need to figure out a plan, but I just want to make sure that this is taken care of appropriately. So, everyone who's, anyone who's listening that's been involved, anyone who, you know, everyone at the, at our many different tables here, we're not all at one table today, but hopefully we can, you know, figure this out so that, you know, either this is gonna happen, you know, in Councilman Charland's district, or, you know, for, you know, some reason, we gotta figure something else out, but looking forward to getting this done as soon as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, Councilman?
Real quickly, just to answer Councilman Wilson's question here, the project name is a low-barrier single shelter, and directly in, and Jay here explains in the bid that we're looking at 37 units to house 58 individuals, or 29 people if they can't receive a HUD waiver, so it is clearly defined that this is, this project is for, is for singles here, and we need to make sure that that's changed and codified. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor of a motion to recommit Bill 749, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill 749 will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Any further discussion on the other bills? If not, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Teresa Cale Smith, presenting on the Committee of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cale Smith presents Bill Number 939, Reported a Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for September 18th, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 866, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into a Sponsorship Agreement with the Clearview Federal Credit Union for the 2024 City of Pittsburgh Gingerbread House Display and Tree Lighting Ceremony at No Cost to the City.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. The bills, is there any discussion? If not, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally, and that takes finally to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting on the Committee of Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ah, there we go. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 940, Reported a Committee on Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology for September 18th, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 864, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Matrix Point Software LLC in an Amount Not to Exceed $310,000 over six years.
in an Amount Not to Exceed $310,000 over six years for Software, Professional Support, and Related Training Services related to Litigation Case Management for the City's Law Department.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor to pass this of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It's passed finally. And that takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything from members? Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, yeah, so I just wanted to, just a quick comment, you know. I'm, of course, um, glad, glad to see my team's bill for additional protections for medical marijuana patients. Um, I'm glad to have seen it passed. Um, uh, as we all know, I specifically introduced the bill in the hopes of sort of moving the needle on this issue for, um, our workers in the construction industry. So, um, I'm obviously disappointed by the amendment, uh, that was brought forth to, with the intention of, of specifically excluding, um, our union construction workers from, from the protections. Um, you know, there are numerous high-risk life-or-death vocations here in Pittsburgh where our workers are trusted to responsibly use medical marijuana to treat a medical condition, and that includes our own Pittsburgh firefighters and paramedics. Um, I, I believe that our construction workers and certainly our union construction workers deserve those same protections. Um, it's unfortunate that they won't be getting them today. But, that said, I would do want to underscore again, medical marijuana is legal in Pennsylvania. And, um, I would, you know, again, for anyone who's listening, uh, in, in, in the construction sector, you know, talk to your business managers, get your CBAs, you know, you know, start, start talking about what you, what you need to see in those CBAs so that you can have the, uh, the, the, the protection you deserve to use medical marijuana to treat, uh, treat a medical condition. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I appreciate all the work on this. I mean, the, the difficulty here is that, um, it was coming up last Wednesday, and it came up again, um, throughout the week as I looked into this. You know, the, um, the state law doesn't specify other acts, and it, maybe that was on purpose, maybe that was the intent. That, well, maybe that was the state's way of, um, ensuring that people who had CBAs, that they were, that it was just under, you know, under that agreement. But, uh, since it doesn't, since state law doesn't specify the, um, the, the Labor Relations Act, then, you know, it's still points, like, still CBAs are still under that Labor Relations Act. So even the state law can be challenged, and from my understanding, it has been successful that, you know, it has to, that that is, that they have to abide by that. So, in essence, the, the way Pittsburgh is trying to get involved in what the state already has passed, uh, seems to be difficult, given the, the nature that they never even specified. You know, they should have designated that that act was actually the one that was, you know, going to be within the Medical Marijuana Act.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I mean, I, I will just, just to underscore again, I, you know, when it comes to the CBAs, that's what I would say for those workers, is that, that, that is probably your primary recourse is to, you know, talk to your business managers, start talking about what is in those CBAs. And, um, you know, if, if, if that's important to, to you, your coworkers, um, your loved ones, make sure that those protections are in the CBAs since they are not in this bill. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate, uh, Councilwoman Warwick, um, on the passing of this legislation. I know, um, you know, we may have gotten, you know, to the 10-yard line and not, you know, across, um, you know, the goal line. And, and I definitely understand, you know, the disappointment, you know, and frustration that you have, and I, to have, you know, nothing but respect for you. And I look forward to continue to work with you, um, you know, to figure out ways to, on one end, you know, address, you know, the various serious issues that you brought up around trying to find, um, you know, more healthy ways for those, uh, workers in the construction trades, um, you know, who, you know, right now have to depend on things like Percocets and, you know, very dangerous, um, you know, pharmaceuticals and not, uh, medical marijuana. But also work with you, you know, on the important issue of creating pathways, um, you know, for diverse communities into the construction trades and into the opportunities, um, such as at Hazelwood Green and throughout, you know, our region, uh, where there is, uh, opportunities for development. And we want to make sure that, you know, all Pittsburghers have opportunity to participate in those opportunities and seek those high-paying occupations that are associated with the construction trade. So, you know, while we may have gotten, you know, to the 10-yard line, I look forward to working with you in the future and getting across the goal line. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Any other members? If not, that takes us to meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:00, council will hold an executive session on Bills 942, 946, 947, 948 as related to ongoing litigation. Also at 2:00, there will be a training session on the Use of P-cards for council members and their staff in the large conference room. Tomorrow, Wednesday, September 25th, at 10:00 a.m., council will meet for our standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-22138. Also Wednesday, tomorrow, excuse me, Wednesday, uh, September 25th at 2:00 p.m., council will hold a cablecast post-agenda relative to mental health initiatives, which is chaired by Councilperson Sharland. And then on Thursday, September 26th, with sessions at 11:00 and 12:00, council will hold a briefing with Visit Pittsburgh relative to the NFL Draft. The post-agenda relative to the Stop the Violence Trust Fund is going to be rescheduled for a later date. With that, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.